Good evening, everyone. And welcome to a special meeting of the City of Pierceall. We need to held today Tuesday 23rd, 2019, at 7:30 at Pierceall Public Library. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Mary Moore.
Present.
Mayor Protim Robert Villal.
Present.
Councilmember Richard Fonda.
Here.
Councilmember Sonia Aguina.
Here.
Councilmember Brenda Divinio.
Here.
Councilmember Julianna Benfides.
Present.
Councilmember Ben Briscoe. And Councilmember Galen Page.
Here.
We have a call, so let us stand for our implication as well as our pledge of allegiance.
You know what, thank you so much for bringing us here this evening. I just pray that you be with us as we go through this evening, go through this meeting, make decisions for our city, Lord, just always, has always guided us and directed us in the way you have us to go, Lord. Just pray that you be with our city staff and our police and our fire department and just all our first responders, Lord, just be with them and keep them safe as they work to keep us safe, Lord. And just stand up, pray, command.
Like the command of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, presentation A, presentation by the Finance Department.
Uh, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, we have a presentation ready for you for today in regards to Mary Bennison's retirement. We had a plaque for her 43 years of service. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to come today, so we'll make sure to mail it out to her before it turns. So that's what the presentation looks like.
So we're moving on to item five, action to consent agendas. And discussion of possible action regarding approval minutes for April 9th, 2019's council meeting. This is an action item. Need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Okay. I think it went to Cruz or April 9th.
Any questions on concerns of April 9th agenda? For the record, please, Ben Briscoe arrived at 7:35.
So, you know, question. Yes, on the agenda seven, we've established an amount that we can be, I'm convinced, to plan with payment to the county.
We did, we had the budget in with the amount, the payment is $11,911.05.
Any other questions or concerns? Think we will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for April 9th, 2019 council meeting.
Madam Mayor, I note that we have accepted minutes.
May I have a second, please? Second, all in favor? All in hands. Motion carries minutes. Alrighty, we move it on to new business. Discussion of possible action regarding approving ordinance number 2019, that's 04, that's 01, regarding adoption of the revised City of Pierceall personnel policy. This is an action item. Need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion. Motion to discuss.
All in favor?
Okay, Madam Mayor, Council, the last meeting we gave you guys the draft policy to review for this meeting. It took us a while to get this thing put together, and we, Josie and Rubidore were a big help in getting this all put together. Once it was completed, sent it to Bobby for legal review. They didn't have any problems with anything that was in it. It does incorporate, as we discussed in the budget last year, that we would incorporate as a appendix to the new personal policy, the pay scale and assignment, so now they would be part of the policy, part of the ordinance, so they would have to be followed. Whatever questions you have, we'd be happy to answer them personally.
I have a question. Yes, ma'am. I was reading this, and it says something about when you have a doctor's appointment, that you have to bring a doctor's excuse.
Do you remember which section? Was that kind of a sick meeting?
My thing is, is a sick time is a sick time for a person regardless if they go to see a doctor or not. Sometimes they may be home just because they have, you know, stomach bugs or whatever. Some can't afford to go pay a copay.
I don't quite remember if it says they have to have it. What normally is done is if there are more than three days.
Three days, yes. That's what I was thinking, but it's not on here. Instead of it's three days that they need a doctor's excuse.
No questions?
One second. This works.
It says that if they utilize, they utilize sick leave for more than 60 consecutive hours, they must provide doctor rotation for medical. So that's three days. Section 88, on page 36.
I have a question. Everything that's been highlighted in green and yellow, is that what changes have been made to?
Those are two sections in the draft that was sent out. Those were two sections that changes were made after talking to Bobby. Those, that highlighted this, I think, trying to remember the colors. I think the green was our old policy, and the yellow was a new one, or vice versa. We had some things in our existing personal policy that were illegal, and so I wanted to make sure it caused attention, to call attention to those specific items, to make sure that we got those. That was part of the reason that we started rewriting this.
So which is which, though?
Um, do you remember, Bobby, which one's which?
I don't, I don't have my front of my head properly. I mean, I wasn't here, so I don't exactly.
Give me a section number, and I'll read the first few words, and you'll know which one's which.
Uh, section number, section number two on the political activities.
Section number two, what, page, oh, page?
Yeah, page nine.
So it starts out with, while the City of Plague may run for political office?
To ensure against any political interference in the governing of the City of Pierceall with the job of any City employee, the following rules on political activity shall apply.
So that's probably the old, is that the green one?
No, that's yellow.
Oh, so that's the old, the green.
Okay, so, okay, got you. So the green is what was revised?
Yes. But there were substantial changes, so that's why I wrote those, so you guys could see what the substantial changes were. And there was two sections, in particular, that section, and the other one that what was in our personal policy was.
Did nepotism was removed?
Nepotism is off, and I can let Bobby explain that. Nepotism applies to city government, and the only group that nepotism applies to is you guys. You guys can hire somebody that's related to you. There is no other nepotism provision for city at all.
And the question was whether nepotism applied to city employees, and the answer is no, it does not, unless you say it does. As a matter of law, it only applies to you as a council. You can choose to have it applied to all of your employees, which makes it difficult. The smaller the city you are, the more difficult it is, obviously, to be able to have employees work within the same department or the city or with respect to line of staff authority. But, and that's the question that was posed to me, is do we have to have it? And the answer is not for employees. You can choose to have it, and deal with the consequences, both in your opinion better or worse, but you don't have to have it, because the law only applies to you as elected officials.
So does that go along with fraternizing as well?
Uh, we're talking about two different things.
Well, I mean, but I didn't see any fraternizing in the, in the door inside or on the handle. Was there anything I know?
Not that I can recall.
I don't recall anything that is. No? No? No, I don't recall that being an ordinance.
We did draft, we sort of reviewed it and responded to any questions that we posed, but I don't remember fraternizing.
What if the new city manager that comes in has something that he needs to add to the policies and procedures?
Well, it's an ordinance, so it can be amended just like any other ordinance. It can be amended at any time. You know, part of, part of the push to get this done is that our other one does have some things that opens us up to a lawsuit. I know very clearly it opens the city up to a lawsuit, so getting that stuff out of the way, but it can be adopted. What you see with most, Bobby and I talked about this, if you look at our old personal policy, and some of the sections, there's like almost, they try to do almost an exhaustive list of things that you can or can't do, and those exhaustive lists have tend to get you in trouble, because then if there's something else that happens, and you use that section of the policy, it's like, well, it wasn't listed. There's 45 things listed. So you gotta be careful. So you kind of leave them where they're, most of these now, you do the ordinance, and then you do policy revisions or policy additions to it, or a written thing to explain what that means or what it doesn't mean. But that's what you see whole cities doing now. But yeah, it can be amended at any time, just like any other ordinance.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we need to entertain an action to address ordinance number 2019, that's 04, A motion? Huh?
Another question?
Yeah, another question?
I don't know if you saw it or not.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019, 04, that's 01.
There's a motion, and we're taking it, have an action, please. Second, please. Second, I'm ready. All in favor? If I show a hands. Motion carries five, six to one. Six to one? Okay, discussion of possible action, ordinance number 2019, that's 04, that's 02, amended the adopted budget for this year, till the 1st, 2018. Action item, entertain motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, as requested by you guys at the last regular meeting, budget amendment ordinance number 2019, 0402 would establish a line item in the administration budget, would be line item 348, which would be litigation of Steg versus Trail County Appraisal District, and it would transfer $11,911.05 from the contingencies accounted into that line item to cover the expenses for the lawsuit for this year. That way we can keep track of it. So direct, I can refer.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019, 0402.
As a motion and second, all in favor, if I show a hands, please. Motion carries unanimous. Alright, this is item C, discussion of possible action on the city employees insurance plan. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please. Motion to discuss. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, through and in the meeting with some representatives from our new insurance agent, the record, they have some stuff to talk to you about on insurance at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, city council, city staff, I appreciate very much the time that you've allotted to come over and address a couple of subjects that the staff would like to have made known to you. So to that end, I prepared a brief presentation I'm trying to go debrief about. I know you have a lot of business, and I'll stay around to answer any questions right after I finish that, or you can interrupt me at any time, and we can get that done as well. I've made a printed copy, so I'm gonna pass one of these out to each one of you, and perhaps... And I apologize, my name is Javier Vara, and I am the team lead on the account for the City of Pierceall as far as your employee benefits are concerned. That runs the brand of all the benefits that the city provides the employees. And I have with me Kara Collins, who is also a team member, and I have another team member at the office, Luis Agalo, who is also on this team. We like to make sure that if I'm not around, Kara will always be able to take care of any business questions, and Luis will do likewise as well. I'd like to turn over to the agenda page, and if you'll follow me real quick. I'm gonna talk about what we currently have in place, the plans and the rates that are in place currently, the cost of those plans, the plans and premiums history, that'll have something to do with some of the subjects we'll cover briefly to dive. We're gonna cover the RFP process. RFP stands for Request for Proposal. In other words, when we go out to market to see who can bring us the best plans at the best possible rates. More importantly, the Request for Proposal timeline, how much time does that take to get done? And finally, the pros and cons of going out to market, in particular for the City of The next page, on page three, will just let you know of all the plans that are in place, they are effective on October 1st of each year. The medical plan currently is with United Healthcare. The dental vision based term supplemental and the gap plan are all currently with Sunlight. Again, they were effective on October the 1st of 2018. They've been in place prior to that, but they renew every year in October. On page four, just, you know, it looks like a lot of numbers and things that may not be as familiar to you, just basically tells you that the plan currently has a $5,000 deductible, $35 copay, and so on, so forth, as we move along. The reason I put this slide in is that I wanted to let you know that in October 1st of 2018, your rates were sitting at 451 an employee, if you'll see the left-hand side. And on the right-hand side, the 58187 is what ended up being accepted in what is currently in place. So there was a significant increase there from 451 to 581. Just wanted to make sure you understood where we were and how we got here. So on the slide, on page five, I'm gonna go through this relatively quickly, but all it does, it summarizes what exactly the City of Pierceall is contributing to the employee benefits plan. A lot of times, many employees don't really know how much work and time and effort and money the city expands on their benefit. So the current medical plan was in effect on 10/1. It will end on 9/30, September 30th, 31st. And so the current rates are, as they are market, low, you only focus about, and so on, so forth. So the annual cost of the plan is 482,137. The part that the City of Pierceall picks up is 94, 96 percent. The part that the employer, I mean, employee contributes is 4 percent. So that's a pretty important number when you look at that, saying, well, what does the city do for me? Well, it pays for 96 percent of your plan. Then there's an additional plan, it's called a gap plan. If I can just explain that briefly, your plan currently has a $5,000 deductible, and the city has chosen to go out and get a supplemental plan that is applied to the deductible. So if your deductible is 5,000, this gap plan is 3. So that just lowered every employee's $5,000 deductible to actually 2,000. And that, the city also contributes and says, hey, listen, we got a tremendous program here, so you should be able to attract and keep employees based on your benefits as you have structured them. It all, the city also pays for their current $25,000 life policy. That is a case that they would pass away. It would be 25,000, but if they die accidentally, it doubles the amount, so it's $50,000. They, employees, by coming to work here, have that policy issued to them, and they become eligible full-time employees. And that the city picks up for, or the cost for. So in the three areas in which the city picks up the tab, it totals to 523,710, which would be your medical, your life insurance, and your gap plan. So you can kind of get an idea where the budget might be as far as the employee benefits are concerned. So I wanted to visit a little bit, and I know I'm going a little quickly here, but it's relatively simple, you have any questions, let me know. This whole page, on page six, is what underwriters and insurance companies look at when they're going to give you a renewal, meaning, hey, listen, we've insured you for the last year, but the upcoming year, we're gonna have to make some adjustments. The adjustments are based on how much premium did I collect and how many claims did I pay out? So they're in the business of trying to maintain more premium than they pay out claims, otherwise they wouldn't stay in business. So there's a formula called a loss ratio. All that means is you divide your premiums, how much you pay, by the number of claims. Target-wise, should be around 85 percent. And if you look at the last 2017, 2018, for the claims that we have information on, it's running at 118 percent. So it's a bit higher than the 85 percent target that would be what we would look for. So given those circumstances, then the insurance carrier, in this case, United, or whoever might be looking at the plan, might say, the premium that was collected, which you guys are paying, it's not enough to cover the claims that the same people is incurred. So there may be an adjustment needed, and so that's how a lot of the carriers will evaluate the risk and how much money they feel they need to pay claims, and, you know, make a little money just like anybody else. So it's important to know that that is where we stand today, at 118 percent. Can you do anything about it? No. We all don't know who's gonna get sick, or whether we're gonna have a good year or bad year. So the next page, page seven, is interesting, and I debated whether or not to include this page, and I finally said, oh, yeah, I'll put it in. Actually, this is an email from United Healthcare, and what happens is that in this marketplace, the 50 to 100 employees, the carriers will only release claims information twice a year in any 12-month period of time. We've already, the City of Pierceall, with the other agents, and when you came up for renewal in October, it was, the information was requested. So they can do it one more time. The question was, do you ask for it now, or do you ask when renewal comes about? Renewal is in 90 days, or from July, it would be October 1st. So then we had a big discussion, should we go out and try to get something better? And that's what I'm going to address in a little bit. But this email just says, hey, you know, you need to sign these documents, and we don't provide the information except one more time, so we have to be real careful. And I'm gonna come back and visit that issue. Some of you may have questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you. The Request for Proposal process, it's really not just go out and ask a couple of carriers and see if they'll give us a plan, and how much will it cost? It takes some time, so what I, what I did was to try to give you a step-by-step, so that you might see that it takes time, and it involves not only the city staff, but it involves the employees that are participating under the plan. And there's lots and lots of documents that have to be produced on a... So what I decided to do was to say, well, let's take a look at what exactly is the process, and how much time does it take before I can get somebody to tell me, hey, listen, I can get you a plan at this cost? And then you can make a decision as to the three bidders, and, you know, pick the best plan. So you've got to advertise the proposal. That takes two weeks. You've got to do it twice. We have got to prepare all the documents. City staff has to go get plan documents, they have to get claims information, they've got to get all those, all the plans, because it's not only the medical plan, the dental, the vision, the gap, all of those plans are going out there in the marketplace. You can imagine gathering all those documents. And I've given you the forensics, what I felt was the time constraints for each particular step, the proposal deadline. So you release the proposal after it's been advertised, and you gotta give them a chance to get it, evaluate it, start putting their proposal together, and then send it back to you. So that takes some time, because we're not the only ones that are out there looking for a proposal. There's lots and lots of accounts that are looking for that. Some of these are optional, I'll skip through that, but when the proposals come back, we have to do a technical review of the proposal. Okay, what are they? What do they offer? Let's do a comparative analysis. Let's do a comparative in cost. So I'm giving one to three days, which is relatively short time to turn around in. You've got to write a review, a written review of each proposal. You've got to do oral presentations, you've got to do a final selection of the carrier. You've got to come to city council and make your recommendations. You've got to establish how many points so that we can say this was a fair process. It was outlined as to what areas are going to be weighted, and we told them out, and at the end of the day, the winner is the one with the most points. Then we have to finalize, sign the contract, we've got to communicate the new plans to the employees, we've got to get all the enrollment forms, set up the meetings, bring them through, explain the benefits, sign them off. After all this data is, all this process takes place, then all that information's got to be sent all back to the carrier who was selected. They in turn have to input all this data into their systems, and then produce your ID card, so that everybody in the city is happy with their new ID cards and ready for either going to the hospital or picking up their prescription drugs. On page nine, I have outlined a sample, and of course, this has, there's been some days since I put this together, but it'll give you an idea of what a calendar would look like if we were to say, let's use July 1st, it's the first time that we can give plans in here, you know, with a real contract. You guys can prove it, we can sign the contracts and move on forward. So you can see that from April through July is the process just to get it done. The point to this whole exercise really is to show you that it takes some time. So we come back to the dilemma. So, we come back to the dilemma, and that is, if your renewal is on October 1st, and you're looking for a renewal, taking it out to market and being as quick as we can to get it in July, August, September, that's 60 days, you're 60 days out from your renewal. Question is, once you went out for renewal, because you put it out formally, then your current carrier, if the claims are not as, as good as we anticipated, could say, "You know that 581 that we're charging you now? Thank you for the RFP, we're going to adjust our numbers. Here's our offer effective July 1st." And you go, "Oh, we, we have a deal until September." No, you sent out an RFP. So, we've answered it in good faith, and here's the number, uh, here's our, our renewal offer based on the claims data. I don't have it. And so, we sit back and say, "Hmm, do we want to take, do we want to go down that, that road?" Or perhaps, since we're 60 days from the renewal anyway, maybe we should just wait, ask for the data one time, get it all, and send it out for the October 1st renewal, rather than looking for something in July at this time. Uh, Page 10. So, this whole exercise, what are the pros? What are the cons? On the pro side, the possibility of better rates, the possibility of maybe making it a better plan for the employees, the opportunity to add some more benefits if that would be the case. And the earliest effective date moving away from what we currently have would be July 1st, that's on the plus side. What's on the minus side? Give me the downside. Why should we, what should we consider? Well, the possibility of higher rates effective July, higher than the ones that we have guaranteed to September. The loss ratio we know is running 118%. I don't know if it's gotten any better. Probably some of the staff may know that there are some claims out there, there's people incurring expenses. If that at 118 is higher, maybe not so good. But I, I can't, I couldn't guarantee what I, uh, what it would be. Uh, would, would we want to move away from what we know we have until October 1st on the gum that maybe it's better? Um, if we move carriers because we found something that was more or less as good, is it worth the disruption? New, new providers, new hospitals, new networks, a new carrier? Um, also, the prob, the downside is, hopefully, we don't have claims that are worse. We'd always like to think that they would be better. I know that I've run it a bit quickly. Are there any questions that you might have on that?
Mr. Tete, can you identify why the rate was so high? Is there anything specifically?
Well, um, I can, I can only tell you that we only see numbers. We could not identify if it's a person specifically, because it's, it's, uh, it's protected, it's protected information that, um, if I were to call, they wouldn't give me the information. The only information that, that is provided is that number one, number two, number three, X number of dollars, X number of dollars. It may tell you it's having to do with maybe a kidney transplant, may have to do with a malignancy, cancer of some sort, or you may even have end-stage renal failure. I don't know.
My, my question was really, Tete, if you can't go in and de-
I'm so sorry!
-tell us, perhaps was, was there something extraordinary that happened?
Yeah, we've had, we've had some extraordinary things with multiple employees. Um, it's not just one, it's three or four. Uh, and we talked about that during this whole process, was that the loss ratios could be going higher, uh, when the decision was made not to take the offer we had last year and go out, except we, you know, there, we had employees that we knew had run up some big bills. Um, so, yeah, and I don't know that those, the last five months, I don't know, and I don't keep track of it. I don't know what the loss cost was a little bit.
Somewhere similar to 17, or?
Somewhere similar to 18, I would imagine.
Yeah. 17 or so, whatever.
And then what happens, you know, so say it reverted back to 76, I'm sure that would be the number, 85 is what you shoot for, and the year before, we were at 76. So, it reverts back to that, and we get a discounted rate? You know, and I'm looking down the road.
Yeah. Uh, the better, the, the loss ratio below the 85% target, and I, that's just my personal target, uh, should produce a no-rate increase or a better rate than what you currently have. But it's not necessarily the case. Some, some carriers will be for market share, and they'll break, uh, they'll, they'll give you a better deal. Uh, one thing for sure, if you're running over 100%, and, and I've, I went out and, and asked, "Hey, what about this scenario?" Not mentioning anything or anything, I mean, what would, what do you think you would, we would do? It's probably, I could not give you a better rate. It'd probably be more than what you currently have, if a scenario of 118 or 120% was present. Uh, I don't have any reason to believe that perhaps it might be as good as 2017, uh, but that doesn't mean that in 2019, it might not be, get better. Uh, but we know that up until the latter part of 2018, it's 118%, so you can add the last four or five months. And if there is some knowledge that, uh, claims continue, employees are, and, and that's, that's a great thing, that we're, that the plan is there to help them out at the time of need, that's what insurance is for. It's just that now we have to deal with the finance side. Uh, but certainly, in, in, in the next couple of months, we'll, we'll, we'll start looking out and scouring the marketplace, getting that, that things data in, and, and going out and saying, "Hey, what is it, what else can we do that would help us mitigate any increase or any numbers that come close to where we are?"
Is there any connectivity between it, the, you know, the TML and United Healthcare? It looked like, you know, the TML was all in line, and then when we switched to United Healthcare, then it looked like it kind of got rocky, is that, that just went to the line?
Well, United Healthcare's saying, "Whoa, we take it over," and it didn't, didn't turn out so good. Uh, TML, uh, you know, they're, they're still out there. Uh, they're a viable entity, that's a Texas municipal league, uh, and they, they could go ahead and, and, uh, and make a proposal, they'll prepare a, a proposal for you, simply because under state statute, they have, they don't play under the same rules as the Edna, the Humana, the Blue Cross in, uh, of the world.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Um, so what was the instructions for you to get us a quote by July 1st?
No, the, uh-
Well, what, what, what was this, just a scenario, or?
This, these are the pros and cons of, you know, whether we get a proposal on, for July 1st, or we would've gotten a proposal for June 1st or May 1st.
So, when we do this, when are we gonna go out for, for bids?
I would suggest that you wait until your October renewal. Now, that doesn't mean you wait until October-
Right.
-but, you know, like, let's say in September, we start getting the lack, the, the claims data, updating the five months that we don't have, and then preparing all of this RFP that I just, uh, described to you, and go out to the market and take a look, see what, what's out there for us.
So, and when are the loss ratios available?
When we ask for them. Remember, you can only do it one time. You either do it now, and if you do it now, and you want to take a look at October 1st, all the carriers in the market are gonna say, "Hey, I'm missing four months. Where are they?"
So, let, let me tell you. So, when we went through the whole insurance process last year, the decision was made, uh, the council decision was not to accept the plan that we had offered, but to do the RFP, and then to maybe go out for RFP after that, or to, to do the RFQ for a new insurance agent record, and then look at RFP after that. So, we went through that process to do the RFQ, got that done, then they started talking to them, saying, "Okay, the next thing the council wants is, we'll do this." So, then they sat down with SWDC, and SWDC says, "Okay, you know, here's the reality. You can do it right now, but if you do, and the rates go up, it's not gonna be October 1st, it's gonna be the day you do it." And so, there, there's not been that, I mean, that's y'all's decision when you go out. The reason for this tonight was to talk about that and say, "Look, if we do do what we talked about doing, what we started this process, we may end up costing ourselves four months."
So, it would be beneficial to stay on the plan that we currently have and go out before, like, what, 90 days before renewal?
I'm sorry?
Are, are we gonna go out for a-
Absolutely, absolutely. That would be the recommendation-
Right.
-and the, and the reason being, we're too close to the renewal date within 60 days or so, to take a risk at getting a higher rate from September, let's do it in July and get the higher rate, so-
See, because right now, we're locked in on that, that premium-
Correct, correct.
So, so we, we would to ask them for, for the, for the loss ratios, and they're gonna say, "Hey, wait a minute, okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and change our rates as well."
Right. If we ask for loss ratios now, and we don't go out for our bid till October, we're gonna have a gap, because we won't be able to get them yet. So, we'll get them through now, but then in October, any carrier's gonna say, "Wait a minute, where's July and August and September when we go out, and we won't be able to get those?"
So, are they gonna propose a renewal October 19?
Yes. They are going to make you an offer to renew the current plan, and you'll probably get it, uh, 60 days prior to October 1st.
About the healthcare one?
About the healthcare one.
But, but at the same time, we can go out, up on the markets-
Yes, absolutely.
Go to TML, or-
Yes, remember. You can go to the whole market, and we'll say, "Okay, here's all that we have, here's the data, it's up to speed, 10-1, give you your number." Then we'll take it, we'll run through that gambit, I'll come back, and I'll, you know, give you the analysis, give you the scoring, and then y'all make a decision, and we'll execute what you want.
I'm just confused by one thing. Why can't we ask one more time this year? Um, we're the customer, and we should be able to get our data when we want it. That's my thought of it.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not in insurance, so-
Excellent question, and, and even people in the insurance industry asking that all the time. The, it's, uh, the carriers will only release their data twice a year, and that has to do with a market of 50 to 100 employees. Now, if you're a thousand-man group, you say, "I want the claims yesterday." As a matter of fact, I don't want them yesterday, I want you to put it on my computer, and I want to have the ability to see them daily. Different ballgame over there, and it has to do with markets and how those markets are, are treated. Unfortunately, you're in the 50 to 100 range.
So, it's, my point is, it's not something legal, it's-
No.
It's just practice in the industry.
Okay. I wish I could tell you different, but, uh, yeah, like I said, you may be talking to your buddy, and he may say, "Hey, we can get our data, our claims anytime." But he, he's in a group that's much larger, and that's the goddamn story.
Yes. So, um, so you advise to just go and stay where we're at, uh, remain with the same premium, and just let it go until, until-
Yes, 90 days before renewal, or? As soon as we get the renewal from, uh, from United Healthcare, we will start this whole process going out to market for the 10-1 renewal, and we will be able to see, "Okay, where are we, and what does it look like?" The only question or the dilemma between the staff and myself and my recommendation was, "Hey, uh, do we really want to go for a 7-1 that close to the renewal and start paying higher rates effective July?" It doesn't make sense. But we wanted to run it by you, make sure you, you knew about it and how it goes, because anybody can come over, "Oh, I can get you a proposal. Yeah, I'll get you one tomorrow." It's, uh, this is what the process is, is how, how much it takes, and, uh, if anybody wants to do it, just fill in the process, and if they can do it in less time, uh, I would be somewhat concerned, but-
I understand. What, one of the things we talked about specifically in the RFQ for the insurance agents, for the insurance agent record, was the fact that our HR department is a one-man department, that we wanted an insurance agent record that was gonna do everything for us. I'm looking at this list, it looks like we do half the work. And that's not what was, was proposed to us when we select an insurance, insurance agent record.
Okay, uh, the RFPs, we can do them as well. Normally, uh, the request for proposal is the, and, and this is flexible, and I, we can put together the request for proposal. Most, most entities would want to include in there what they need, what their folks need, and they're much closer to how that, uh, how that takes place than we are. Um, as a matter of fact, I've worked with Ruben on the request for proposal, he sent me a sample, I looked at it, I made some suggestions as to how to update it. So, that request for proposal is done.
But that's the sample we used before, I mean, it's basically the same. So, we, but the first time we did it, it took a bunch of work to get that RFQ put together. Advertising it, obviously, I mean, that's, that's a simple process, but some of the stuff, um, you know, I, I specifically remember insurance ag, there was insurance agents in that room telling us that when it came time to do the enrollments, they were gonna have people here doing the enrollments. And SBC said, "Oh, we'll do all that and more." I remember all that. I mean, that was very clear in that proposal.
Uh, well, no, we include your subs in the enrollments. Yeah, we will be here to do the enrollments, we actually, we bring the whole staff. We will bring three or four people, and we'll get them enrolled in all the plans. And we will do the explanation of benefits for all the plans. Uh, the reason that I put the City of Pierce Hall is because normally, your staff wants to be there, of course, with your employees, but, uh-
Sign up for it.
Yeah, and that's not a responsibility that would shift to you at all. But I'm glad to point that out, so.
So, the responsible party's gonna be SWDC?
Yes. I mean, I can move the entire thing, except for the advertisement over, and we're fine with that.
Okay, yeah, 'cause that's what we're-
Yeah, and we're fine with that.
Not an issue.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Okay, so we have this as a possible action item, so the action, yeah, the action you need to take is when you want to, when you want, if you want a 10-1 proposal, or if you want a 7-1 proposal, that's the action you need to take, so staff will go through.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. That we, uh, get the D-1, the 10-1, please.
10-1? There's a, that's the same. Do you have a second? All in favor? Okay, item D, discussion of possible action regarding potential contractors, ensuring Republic Services' action item, and obtain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, before I let Mike and others start talking to you, um, we've been talking about trying to do some things to help some of our citizens as far as our trash services go, um, and I think they have a proposal tonight, um, to help us with one of the big issues that we've been looking at, so I'll let them take over.
Madam Mayor, the Council, thank you all for allowing us to have some time tonight. Uh, I'd like to introduce Hilda Juarez, Chief of Division Medical with Republic Services. And we met with y'all two months ago, I guess, and, uh, we had a transition. And it's hard to believe, I was sitting here thinking, 10 years ago, first time I stood before this council, there was a whole lot more hair and a lot less weight 10 years ago, but it's been that long. But I was excited about the transition to Republic, because it allowed us to become a stronger company, to provide our cities a lot more access to the things that we need to provide the city. Unfortunately, ACI was a small company and starting field growing pains. And so, when they came to me, uh, several months ago, I spoke to city staff and some council people, and they expressed the need to help the senior citizens of Pierce Hall. The community was already helping with their electricity, their sewer, and we need to help them with their energy. So, as the transition came through with Republic, I spoke to Republic, and they stepped up to the plate. And what we're here to propose is to reduce the senior rate to 1483. And no price increase for the city for the next year. The only thing that we're asking is for a five-year extension to the existing contract, and the change of language, when we first did this contract, the C P I, which is, was the, the Consumer Price Index Change, has been rewarded over the ten years, and now that they do have one for garbage, it's under the water, sewer, trash, but it will remain, back then, we locked it in to no more than a five percent increase, which has never been close in the last ten years. If it ever gets to five percent, we're all gonna be making money. But it, it's based on the economy, and that allows us to, our price increases with fuel, disposal is going up, employees, which, if y'all could find me about two hundred more or more teams, I would be more than happy to take it. And one other thing that's come up in the last couple of weeks, and Hilda and I have started working on the process, we're looking to expand down south, and we've got some more community, we're currently the provider for Dilly for several more years, and we're looking even going farther south, and we're looking at setting up a transfer station. And somebody has a transfer station, that, we had started this process a couple of years ago, but we just never were able to do it with A C I. But for us to able to set one up, so we didn't have to haul the garbage in smaller trucks, but we can haul it in larger trucks and take over where we would run the operation, would be a big feather in our cap. And once we get that done, that means more revenue to the city, more employment, uh, we were looking somewhere fifteen to eighteen more employees, and would benefit both of us, and we're excited looking at that. But we've come for, before y'all tonight, to ask for a five-year extension to the existing contract and provide these benefits to the city.
So what is the current senior rate?
Nineteen forty-three, it's the same as the rest of the community.
Mike, thank you. Question, when is our contract expired?
December of twenty.
December of twenty. We would, I mean, we would need, before we approve that, though, wouldn't we be needing a contract and have Bobby?
It would just be an amendment to the existing contract is what we're asking.
And your, your price increases is based on the C P I?
Right.
Five percent increase over the last year rate?
No, of the last year, whatever the Consumer Price Index is, we, we pull it up on our computer, and over the last ten years, it's been two, two-point-three, two-point-four percent. And, uh, we provide that documentation, once it's provided to us by the federal government to the city, and here's your price increase.
Five percent of that figure, or?
No, it, it, five, if it was to go to five percent, it would be five percent of the, the nineteen forty-three, it would go up five percent, so I don't know what that is, nineteen eighty, you know?
No, but if it wasn't five percent of what, what the rate was the year before?
Right, right.
But where does the C P I come in?
The C P I is the Consumer Price Index.
Right, but where, where do you use that, you're using that as a rate structure?
Right, right, but you have the existing price. Say, I'm trying to do an easy math, ten dollars, and the C P I is two and a half percent. So next year, the price, we would come to the city, say, we have a price increase coming, it will be ten dollars and twenty-five cents for the next year. We'd under that for the next year. Next year, it may be two-point-one, or it could be four-point-four, but we will provide the documentation. They keep a running total, a rolling twelve at all times.
So it could be anywhere between, it's the, it's the Consumer Price Index not to exceed five percent?
Right, not to exceed five percent.
So it's set?
That way, it protects the city.
Right, so whatever the C P I is, is what it's gonna be, but if the C P I goes crazy, it's not going over.
It's not going, and that protects the city from, if we get good times and we all start making money, that's what it's all based on, the economy, and I don't know, in my lifetime, I'm getting pretty old, I'm never gonna see the economy great again, but it, that, but it protects the city, that we can come in and go, okay, C P I's fourteen percent, we're going up fourteen percent. If C P I goes to fourteen percent, we're gonna go five.
And that, that two to five percent, that's already in the contract, I mean, that's what we've been doing every year, based on the seat, but they didn't have garbage, the C P I didn't cover garbage before. It, it kinda excluded it, it looked at all the utilities, and it just kinda made an assumption on garbage. The new C P I actually has garbage, it has a category for garbage, or for waste, whatever that they call it.
What percentage of our residences are senior citizens, and how does that affect budget and revenue or?
Well, it wouldn't affect revenue, because what the reduction that would come in would be reduced, and we're paying out, so. So the way, the way we do the garbage is they, they, A C I, Republic tells us what their rate is for the year, and then we have a markup that goes on that to pay for utility clerks and whatever else, so whatever their rate is, plus that, that markup is what we, what we do, so it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't, we wouldn't end up losing revenue, because we're not gonna change the number of accounts, so we wouldn't end up losing revenue. Um, I think, you know, I, last time we looked at the total number of senior accounts, when we first started to push, a few months ago, we had some people come in, you know, and they had a paper, and everybody was talking about senior accounts, and we had some other people come in and give us the documentation to show that they actually qualified for the senior accounts. Um, I think we got a hundred and something, there's more out there, I'm sure there's more out there, they just haven't come in yet. This is the one, this would be the one that actually would affect us, because the reduction of water, it doesn't, I mean, that does affect bottom line for us, the reduction in sewer affects bottom line for us, if we reduce rates for them, this wouldn't have the effect on city revenues at all.
And what's the age qualification for the seniors, sixty?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
How are we gonna determine whether or not they are citizens, I mean, it's senior citizens?
They bring in four years' part.
Oh, yeah.
Because I wonder if, if anybody, if, you know, any public and Harry's gonna bring their grandparents, you know?
It has to be under their account, it's one single residential account, and they have to provide the driver's license, so you have that all down my way.
And the bills have to be at their name, you can have five houses with a senior discount if you own five houses. So what do you look at?
If we were to extend it for five years, what's the guarantee that you'll, you'll build a transfer station for us here? Would, would we be able to put that in the contract?
Well, there's no guarantee within two years, there's no, it, it's all, and we just started, Robert, you know, the last couple of weeks, but we need to create a hub down here, and, but there's no guarantee, right now, we're not at that point of doing our research, talking to the city, seeing if something could be worked out, it's too early in the sta, stages to make a commitment on that. But you're a big hub in the south, and there's several towns to the south and the southwest of you that we wanna get involved with. And, uh, Hilda came to me with the idea of it a couple of weeks ago, and it sounded like a heck of an idea, because the transfer station, one, would it be the benefit to y'all if, you know, if you have one already? You're the owner, we would be the operator, so you maintain ownership of it. And then, and this is way above our educated level, scale level, grade level, is that there's tipping fees. So not only, we, we were bringing solid waste in from other communities and transferring to here, the city would be earning money off of those tipping fees.
The, the only thing that concerns me is that you built somewhere else.
I can't believe, I can't, I understand, I understand, right, I understand that. Uh, all I can say is that we're in such early stages, I can't make any commitments, so we're gonna be here in two months or three months, but we'd like to get the ball rolling. And we started this thirty or forty years ago at one time with, with A C I looking, taking over the transfer station, and we just never got it done. But we have the power, the company, to start looking at doing something, and one of the benefits is, Robert, is that this garbage truck can haul eight tons to the landfill, and a walking floor trailer behind an eighteen-wheeler can haul twenty-four tons. So we can condense our loads, our transportation, and haul three loads at one time.
And tipping fee off everyone?
Certainly, tipping fee off everyone. And tipping fees.
If you're off of, uh, sorry, if you're off of every time, every time they get transported there.
So one of the things to think about is, I mean, they've already got Dilly to do this, they're looking, they're talking to Catula, they're talking about they're trying to get a bus or something, we're the only one that really has a facility in place, Dilly just got through, spent a hundred thousand dollars cleaning their moment up, and they're not gonna mess with it again because they, they have out roads. Catula's too far to the south, because the, the road here is split wherever, that's the only logical choice they have, if they get to that point. This is the only logical place.
Why not just wait a little longer and see how much can grow with the time, I mean?
Well, we're planning for the future, and, and, you know, uh, you know, we're looking for Catula, could be three years from now, and I haven't got out to those communities and, and become involved with them, but Carrizo Springs, Crystal City, you know, and all these towns out here have had solid waste issues over the years, and Republic is the first company that's come down here to be willing to look, they wanna get involved to provide a solid waste solution to all the small communities.
I'd say Crystal City hasn't, uh, their own, is it also? They, in truth, so little community in the county that, I, I know they?
Yes, well, Savinaw did too before A C I.
Savinaw, Savinaw's been closed, they got closed down and fined a tremendous amount of money and had to do cleanup, and there are some small communities that operate off of air detention, which is the old landfills, like you and I used to sit, you're probably going up, dig a hole, dump it in, but they are limited to the tonnage that they can take in per day. And what the difference is, is that we meet the sub-tollage restrictions, we have to come in and build a liner, a clay cap, another liner, and a very expensive process, and the small communities cannot afford that type of construction cost. But Republic is the first company, they never had another alternative, and we're coming out here to provide them an alternative, and to, that, it, just like the city of Savinaw, when they got to looking at and realized how much money they were spending losing on garbage, you know, they were one twenty-thousand-dollar engine away from really being bad, and they realized that by having us do the garbage and providing the service, what a big relief and headache that was off the city.
Yes. That, what, a transfer station would be out there where our station is right now?
That would what we would, we would begin to look at, to see, we, we've got everything to look at, permits, what kind of permits y'all have as far as the transfer, there's collection stations, transfer stations, and fortunately, y'all kept up with y'all, seen it up to date, but we would look at that, and like I say, get way above my level, we'll do the looking, and start looking at the whole piece of pie. And I just know that, that has not been a, and, Robert, you can correct me on this, has not been a big, it's been more of a drain to the city of Pierceall than it has a profit. And if we were to, they'd be able to do something like that and work it, then you're gonna be making a tippity thing with no labor, no headaches.
And you maintain the transfer station?
And we would be the operators of the transfer station.
And we would play the payroll to the?
Oh, they, they would be our employees, you would no longer have any employees.
But that's not within that prior plan?
Yes, yes, that's something that's rolling, you know, right now, we just have to, there's a lot of negotiations, research, negotiations, getting it set up, it's not just something that can be done in thirty days or sixty days.
Yes, so what, what about, um, 'cause I know that the people that are out, outside of the city limits, they, they have to pay a little bit extra, so would that still apply to the senior citizens that are outside of the city limits? 'Cause don't they pay more?
For garbage?
For garbage.
They pay more for water and sewer?
I thought that they paid more.
They don't, I think garbage pays the same for everyone.
I think they pay a little more because of the density is not out there, because they're under E T J, but there's, you know, in one city block here, there's fifty homes, and out there, we may drive two miles to pick up six homes, but they, y'all were providing water and sewage, so we, we also provided the garbage. Now, we will be willing to, any seniors out there, like, I can't imagine paying that many, but if the city, the city is willing to provide the discount to them, we are too.
So a, a contract extension, would it take effect right now or at the end of December? The five years?
It would, it would be extended onto the year, we have a year and three months left. It would be a five-year extension onto the existing contract.
To pay the twelve? So it's starting in some?
Right. Right.
How about the discounts for the seniors, when, when would that begin?
If, if I'm something, if we agree? If we agree, we'd start at May first. We build in their rears, so you don't get to make the other, later on. I feel like I, I was afraid you were gonna say, when I started work, I was gonna retire at sixty-two, now that I'm eighty-eighty-two, before, they keep changing, I think.
All right, it's, it's a sick of time, any other questions? I'll build on this item.
How long will it be with A C I?
Me?
Well, I don't know, how long will we have, what, ten years?
Just about ten years, nine and a half, right in that range. Y'all are one of my first.
Is anything gonna be done with that stuff over there by the, by the complex and all that debris and stuff?
The worst, we're working on, I am giving you the names for Moltre, for people that have big operation Moltre, uh, and give you our alternative, another alternative for a burner, but I'm gonna put them in contact with the city, because Republic, if we took it, we had to put money on top, because, you know, so we'd rather put you in direct contact with those people and us help you all we can, but we don't wanna make any money out of it.
Any other questions? If not, we need to entertain a motion to address item D sixteen.
What is the rate right now for the?
Nineteen forty-three?
Looks like it's a thirty-one percent discount, is that right?
I didn't do Aggie math.
I did Aggie math.
I kinda like Jeter, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
And that would be in effect?
Yeah.
With a full, full set for six and a half years? And that would not go up, or would it adjust with?
Not for the first year.
Would it adjust? Not for the first year, then it would adjust, it would always have that range between the two.
But it, it would, it would adjust as?
Right, it would adjust after the first year, but if we go up twenty cents to the regular customer, it would only go up, uh, whatever the, two-point-five or three percent, it would only go up there for the seniors.
Last question. During the, the next five years, is it possible to sit down and amend anything on the contract?
We can always, we'll always, if Council wants to talk, we, I've always tried to make myself available, y'all, and, and always try to be here for the city, and we, the thing that made me proud of Republic is that during the transition, we had the park dedication, and I was new to them, and they were new to me, but they stepped up to be a big sponsor, and they brought my wife, I bet she numbered eleven, twelve, I brought her and enjoyed the day out there. Somebody gonna have to go to Vegas, like, with marriage anymore, I'm right out of that thing.
Mayor, I, I know there'll be extended contract for Republic Services.
There's a motion to table that, I have a second.
Madam Mayor, can, can we put the conditions in there? The, what exactly we're talking, we'll put them in there based on a senior rate of fourteen eighty-seven, no price increase for the next year. no price increase for the next year, five-year extension added on to the other contract, and adding in the new CPI.
That's right.
And maybe the one that we can, it can be amended if there's any questions.
And the new CPI, not to exceed five percent.
That's what it means.
It's an existential contract?
Right.
And the transfer station will be public.
There's a motion to table, may I have a second, please? All in favor, I show hands, please. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank y'all for your time. Thank you, we will see you soon. And as always, y'all got my phone number, if you need anything, call me. Thank you, staff, I appreciate it.
All right, moving on to item sixteen.
We're changing it in the computer tomorrow.
Discussion and possible action.
Changing the break in the computer tomorrow.
Discussion and possible action regarding the amended criteria for the city of Pierceaw summer recreation program participation. This is enough, right? Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
On the favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, Ram has been going back and forth, we talked to you guys last time about the program at the school and how they're wanting to develop the two programs, how it bugs or problems getting the coordination with the school, right? So Ram came to me, he had talked to him again, there's still some issues that he's not happy with, having to deal with, they're trying to put their adult workers doing one thing and giving us high school students to supervise high school students. There's, there's a problem, he asked if you guys would table this until the next meeting, so we could try to get the rest of work done.
Entertain a motion to table, please. Motion to table. On the favor? Item table. Item F, discussion and possible action regarding request for Creole Vision Alive sponsorship of bill of the twenty nineteen event. Back to item, entertain a motion to discuss, please. Second. On the favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, if you guys think you want to, he made his request last time. I have it, it's in your packet for the next event, which is November second. Council asked me to put this on the next agenda, so it's on there, he's requesting to add a maximum, right? Six tables, thirty-six chairs, hanging area, moving the banner, some street barriers, trashcans and manpower to take care of the trash, having the PD there to help with the security, the city canopy for their registration table, and possibly helping the electrician, which is the same thing there.
Okay, I have a question. On the electrician, can it be one of the employees to handle it?
We're talking about that, we're gonna do something different with the electrician next time, because the electrician keeps telling, we're gonna give a discount, never gives them a discount too, so.
Just to flip the switch, I mean, I'm pretty sure any employee can go do it.
That's, that's a pretty high powered box, that's why we're pretty careful with that box, but it doesn't, the electrician doesn't need to be there all day, that's for making sure. So yeah, we're gonna do something different with the electrician next time.
We're not gonna get to your day, say anything.
Do you really wanna let me start talking?
Not meeting, we don't get to your day.
Okay, any other questions, if not, entertain a motion to address item F, please?
Motion to approve.
Okay, on the favor? Show of hands. She agrees.
Yeah, there you go.
Item six G, discussion of possible action regarding commercial use of the city of Pierceaw water wastewater treatment plants. Action item, so entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
On the favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, the reason I put this item on the agenda, when I first started here, if you'll remember, we were having all kinds of problems with solids at the wastewater treatment plant. We talked about it at every meeting, the level of solids, the level of solids, we're trying to get them under control. But one of the things that I found out when I first started working here was that we were allowing commercial companies who were pumping out septic tanks to come in and dump in the wastewater treatment plant. That was the reason, one of the reasons we're having trouble keeping the solids under control. So I stopped it. And now we've got our levels fine, I mean, everything's good out there, solid levels where they're supposed to be, we don't have any problems with that anymore. But there is a couple of those, one in particular, who is coming in throwing a fit because we're not letting them dump out there anymore, because they're Pierceaw businesses and they should be able to dump there. Even though the waste that they're bringing in is not from Pierceaw, it's from out of the county or it's from someplace else. They're having to go to, see, Natalia takes from, because Natalia's facility is way bigger than what their community is, so they're happy to take from, I think we, they go to Crystal City, they go someplace else, there's three different facilities they go to, so they pump out somebody's septic tank, they drive their truck to those facilities to dump it. But they're really starting to push this again, and I know as soon as I leave, they're gonna start pushing it even harder, so I wanted to, one, break your attention, that was something that happened in the past and was part of the problem, but two, the rate that we had in here was, was, the only rate that was in our rates to charge them was basically a commercial rate for two thousand gallons or above. And so the rate was way below what they were paying us, that's why they wanted them to dump here. So the purpose of having this on the agenda tonight is, one, to decide that this is something the council wants to do, is to allow those commercial operators to come in and dump into that facility. And two of it is to talk about how we could structure the rates for that. Because the rate should definitely be way higher than what they were being charged, if that's something you want to allow me to. So if you guys have any questions, wanna talk about it, I don't know how many loads, I don't really know how many loads a week were coming in before I died here. I just know that we would get levels down, and then all of a sudden I'd see another report and say, how, what load did those levels? Well, we had three trucks come in and dumped it. What do you, we had three trucks come in and dump? Well, the septic tanks are coming, it's like, where, where's council, you've established that the septic tanks are just gonna dump out there, I think the fire council said that was something we wanted to do. And so they always go back to, well, there's a commercial rate, that's what we've always done. So up to you guys.
So what kind of revenue would be generated by?
Not very much. That was the problem, and it, so you're getting twenty, basically you're getting twenty-six dollars off a truck, they would probably charge it, how much did you have that take? If you guys ever had a septic tank empty out, that's not twenty-six bucks.
Five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So have you checked the surrounding areas?
No, this just came back out, so I haven't looked at it. If this is something the city wants to do, or even consider doing, actions might be to table this until we see what surrounding cities are charging, I think that would be a fine thing to do, then decide at a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars a load, do we wanna go ahead and do it then, maybe that's fine. I just think we need to say something, until we establish policy, there's not any of that anymore. And then the council can decide if that's something they wanna do, they're gonna charge it this rate to do it. Because I know it's a lot more than twenty-six dollars.
Oh, yes.
So is our facility up to spec to accept trucks like that?
It is, you know, what happened before was, you know, again, our solid level got really high. One, partially because the facility wasn't working the way it's supposed to be working, which we know, and we've got a lot of that fixed now. But two, because there was so much that we had brought in, because we were so much cheaper than everybody else. And the guys didn't, you know, they didn't, they were just doing what they were told to do five years ago, or ten years ago, or who knows when. Especially during the oil field, all those little RV parks around there, I mean, those are pumped out all the time. So how much, would we see as much now as we did then? Don't know. I do know that I'm seeing those RV, those RV parks are filling up again. There's definitely something going on in the oil field around here, they're just picking up. There's a lot more trailers, there's a lot more cars and motels, I mean, it's starting to make up. So, I, you know, I think maybe one of the other things that we might wanna do is look at, maybe asking, maybe asking our city engineer to go in and look at the capacity out there and say, we can take this many trucks a week, if that's something that we wanted to do as well and add that in. But then you want, okay, if we could do six trucks a month, or six trucks a week, then, okay, how many local businesses do we have to do, and you get three, and you get three, and that's, that's it, you know, that's the way we're gonna do it. And there, I mean, there is, there's a good possibility to generate a little bit of revenue off this, if we have the capacity to do it out there. So I would make that part of the decision process too, is to have L and B assess how many trucks we can take out.
So you need to, you need to decide it?
Take a look to, look and see what other facilities charge for a septic tank, truck, have L and B give us an estimate of how many trucks they think we could have a week.
And we need to consider what our growth might be.
Sure. Every time these motels fill up, that place gets busier, I mean, that's just, you know, that's what it is. Before, you know, it was, you know, there was fifteen, sixteen, seventeen thousand people there, and that, of course, it was limping, you know, it wasn't working the way it was supposed to be working, like, it was limping out there to get through that, so we gotta keep that into account too.
And the oil field disposal nation starts, I mean, I know it's different because we've got weight, got solids and stuff, but what was like seventy-five cents, fifty cents a barrel?
Does it suppose?
Yeah.
Well, you're talking about like the brine water and, yeah?
Yeah, like salt water.
Salt water.
Okay, entertain a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Real quick, are you gonna consult with L and B, or are you gonna hire them as a service? Of course, are you gonna consult with L and B?
Yeah, yeah, Savinaw needs to talk to L and B about what, yeah, and Robert should be able to give us an answer brief. Pretty easy now, that shouldn't be too hard for the manager, based on current levels and whatever they, I mean, that's just a, it's a great calculation, they should be able to do that. Because if those trucks come in, as you know, when the septic tanks pump, it's all solids. I mean, it's not like what's coming in through the sewer where there's, you know, it's three-quarters water and one-quarter solids, everything off those trucks is gunk, and so it adds to your solid though, quickly.
Is there gonna be a differential between the grease, the grease pits and the?
We don't take grease pits, we do not allow them to know grease, but now, we have people sticking them down cleanouts out there someplace, which we know happens. That's one thing, if we can catch them, we can get them, but, you know, grease pits, there's a whole different process for hauling up that grease, they're supposed to be paying a company to come in and dispose of that.
All right, there's a motion to table, may I have a second, please? All in favor? She cares. All righty, item H, discussion of possible action regarding the sale of recycled water from the wastewater treatment plant. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Second, on the favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, one of the items that, when I first got here, he left, and Jethro, yeah, when I first got here, Jethro wanted to talk to me about an individual that he knew had come in here before my time here, and had tried to talk to the city about the potential of purchasing reclaimed water from wastewater treatment plant for use, use the oil field. We never got hooked up until about a week ago. So this is kind of a three-pointed item here on the agenda. One is, we've had a sit-down and a discussion, I mean, him and Josie, about the potential of them coming in and purchasing that water from us, and I think he's got some information he wants to share with you about what the potential is. But then there's the legal side of it too, so I talked to Bobby about that, and there's a certain way we would have to do it if we do it, because even though that's recycled water from wastewater treatment plant, still public property. And as we know, public property, we can't just, we have to, we'd have to go through an RFP process. I want to talk to you first, a little bit about what he's thinking, and then we'll talk about the legality of the, so it's all yours.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me. My name is Jaime Romano, I've been in the oil field for about fourteen years, specializing in water, wastewater and water resource management. One of the biggest things that I find joy in being in the oil field is watching communities grow. For me personally, I worked for a company for eight years that recycled oil field wastewater. We took the flowback used water, treated it, turned it into water that can be used again. We got to the point where it was so clean that we even had discharge permit in Arkansas to discharge that water back into lakes and streams. Over the last six years, I've been doing consulting work and looking at sourcing water in alternative natures, anything other than potable water, looking at brackish water, municipal waste of fluids, and recycling where it makes sense. That being said, that's where I find my job, what I do. Now, while I'm here, I was born in Dilly, my mom's from Pierceaw, so I have family here in Pierceaw, and love coming down here. And I was thinking, you know what? This model has been done in other communities, why not do it here? Why not do something to generate some room for the town that I live, the town that my family grew up in, and please see what that can do with it, okay? There's been fifty-seven new permits issued in Freo County alone, that's a sport. I've got resources where I know the operators, I know how much water that's been used. In my time in Barnett, wells were taking about fifty thousand barrels per well. It's gotten up to where I've seen over seven hundred fifty thousand barrels per well being used. If we were to take an average of about three hundred thousand barrels, it would take over seventeen million barrels of water to fracture these wells. And that's just the permanent wells up to now. That being said, the rate count's been increasing throughout Eagleford, I think that number's gonna go even higher. You know, so just that alone, that's twice as much of just what the city's produced. So if we could get a small percentage of that market share, I think with the people that I know, the networks that I have, that we can touch and sell all that. The proposal that I've submitted is a preliminary proposal with preliminary terms. If accepted, then we would go and I would get engineering firm and work with your attorneys, work with the environment, TCQ, make sure everything's up to par, and go from there. The reason it is a preliminary terms is because it is pretty capital intensive, and there is gonna be engineering, there's gonna be equipment, there's gonna be personnel. If you can see in that proposal, it will be personal, local businesses use, we're looking for. Questions?
How much water do we put out?
He's got the numbers, I see, don't you?
It's just over a million a day.
A little over a million gallons a day.
And you were, so, so just to recap, you said there's fifty-seven new drilling permits this quarter in Eagleford?
Yes, no, in Freo County.
Freo County.
Yes.
And it takes on average three hundred thousand barrels?
On average, it's about three hundred thousand barrels per well.
And so you're looking to buy everything we produce?
Yes, sir.
And so the capital that you're talking about, you would create some kind of listation to, or would you come right out of our, our, our drainage ditch?
Well, once it goes into the ditch, then it's state property, I can't touch it. So it'd have to be right before that point.
So you build something?
Build something there, and run it over to, what I would do is set up some tanks and some trench or equipment to get it to market.
And what, what do we, I mean, do you have a figure, what you're five is at?
I've submitted the proposal, I think it's supposed to go out to RFP, I mean, if you guys wanna discuss numbers, since it is public information?
Yeah, 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 I mean, since you have submitted, of course, we can accept it because I have the RFP first, but you wanna talk to about the ones you put in, but that's all I...
Sure, proposal right now is generating revenue of two thousand dollars a day and just over seven hundred thirty thousand dollars a year.
And the implication, if not, is there's legal side, I mean, you gotta look for large, it's not going down to the creek anymore, so Bobby, is that for us?
That's a good question. I haven't seen the proposal. As Tink had mentioned, of course, you know, you either go out for a request of proposals or a request for bids, the difference being, if you go out for RFPs, it allows prospective proposers to be creative. If you go out for a request for bids, essentially you're doing much of the dictating of what the response is going to be. What most cities tend to do is go out for a request for proposals to allow people to be kind of creative. Now, another thing is that, this is the way it normally happens, you've got someone that approaches the city with an interest, and then you turn around and follow up on that interest by opening it up to everybody as you are required to do. A couple of things that I would just add to the discussion, one, Mr. Briscoe, you've already raised, which is the delivery system. Because what you would be interested in, in addition to price, is, okay, how are you going to get it? Because you're still gonna have the option, for example, if they don't want or need all of it, you're still gonna be discharging it the way that you normally do, and that option remains available to you. They could take all of it, which would be beneficial to the city, otherwise you're not getting anything out of it. So to answer your question, yes, you always maintain that option of traditional discharge versus selling. Something that I'm sure, you know, is going to be, you know, discussed is the infrastructure cost that was just mentioned. You'd wanna make sure, of course, that you're not, you know, in a perfect world, you're not funding any of that cost, but you need to know exactly what that, that infrastructure is wanting to, what, what is going to, the word just escapes me, what it's gonna entail, because you wanna make sure it's compatible with what you've got out there and what works for the city. The other thing that some cities do, and someone did not mention this, some cities have been successful with, with the take-or-pays. Now, the take-or-pay contract is going to be, you've got somebody comes in who wants it so badly, they will guarantee to take a certain amount of, of effort and pay you for whether they take it or don't need it. That's always more attractive for the city because it allows you to budget and anticipate what the revenue source is going to be. So what you're looking at is exactly what are you proposing to do, how much they're gonna cost. to cost us, and ideally the number is zero, how much are we going to make off of it, and are you willing to guarantee paying to the city? Because otherwise, it could take a while to scale up. And the amount of revenue, even though the amount of discharge is consistent, let's say it's plus or minus a million gallons a day, you'd want to be able to forecast what your revenue is going to be, so that you can budget for it. The other thing, depending on, now granted, if they're going to have to invest a tremendous amount of money, they're going to want to be considered a long-term contract, because they want that stability based on, you know, where they're going to provide this water to. It cuts both ways, long-term for them, benefits the city, it benefits them potentially, the take-or-pay benefits the city much, much more than that. And then, of course, there are cost escalations based on, based on the length of the contract and their ability to get back the money that they invested. There are a lot of moving parts to it, you're asking the right questions. And, and if you have a chance to do it, most cities, you know, take advantage of the opportunity.
Are you, and I missed that, do you work for a specific company or are you a water broker?
I'm the founder of Little Hiller.
Okay.
Just, maybe you're overstepping your position here, you already talked, they already talked to the county, of course, right across Gilliam Road from the wastewater treatment plant, that's county property right there, and I think they're already working on, on putting the tanks and stuff right there, so it's just going to be a pipeline underneath Gilliam Road to get the water from the wastewater treatment plant to that plant, if, if that's the process.
That would be, the second part is working with the county to maybe lease a small section there so we can set up some tanks, whatever's minimally invasive, so we can get it out to market.
Route 1581, we already got a tax auto right there. Whole, whole thing here, though, is, you know, just like Bobby, like Bobby said, you know, these kind of things, these kind of things come up when you have somebody that shows up with an address and doing something, and then you've got to kind of backstep and go through the process to get to that point. But now we know if we do an RFP, we've got somebody that's interested. You know, we could have just thrown this RFP out there, you know, whatever before, and now know what we would have come up with, but, you know, now we know there's going to be a response.
It's very common that you issue an RFP and you only get one response, and that's typically the person that wants to do it anyway. It's not uncommon to get just one response to an RFP.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Listen, is anything we go through, another thing, would that open jobs for?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, we'll need, you know, humpers, knee readers, the initial setup is going to take a lot, a lot of manpower. I'm venturing the bet that we do get it over at the county property, we're going to have to extend it out into market, so that alone is going to be pretty big.
How many employees do you know, rough, just to, guess the mission?
On the short term, building it, it's going to take quite a bit, ten, fifteen, but on a day-to-day basis, you know, it might just take one or two people.
So, two jobs we'll have right now. And there's going to be truck drivers, we've got to get the water somehow.
Yeah, and, you know, for me, because of, you know, the truck driving, that I really look at eliminating and minimizing the truck.
But then, with the old companies take care of it?
Put a pipe underground, pump the water out, and minimize the truck, especially inside the city limits.
And are you doing this with any of the other surrounding cities?
No.
It came to us.
Yes, I did, it came to you. Now, I did help another group acquire the rights, Kenny, but I was just there as a technical support, helping him out, because I was doing a lot of treatment side on that. I had nothing to do with that, I just helped her.
Do you find it difficult to help?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Especially with all the operators, all the gas companies looking at wanting to do something different with the water use, you know, minimizing the freshwater use, looking at alternatives, municipal waste, something that you really, really look at.
And on average, how, how long of a contract do you normally go after you get?
I've submitted ten years, but the option to extend.
And, I mean, I don't know how long you've been in business, but has, has, have any of the other community, I mean, does the price that you pay, would it increase or does it decrease, or do you know?
Well, the proposal is set at a price, but we're not in the agreement stage right now. I think once working with you and the attorney and finding out exactly what works best, if the oil field increases, the market increases, I have no problem with that.
So, our recommendation would be that the action be to issue an RFP for sale of F1 Water from Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Motion, please.
Yes, sir.
We'll be touched.
You said you won?
Oh, what was the action? Our motion is to issue an RFP to, for the sale of the wastewater and wastewater treatment plant.
There's a motion on the table, may I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries in, as soon as possible. All righty, moving on to discussion and possible action regarding a resolution of 2019-04-01 to approve a locating matching form for TXC, VD, fire ambulance and service truck, as grant, this is an action item, maintain the motion, discuss, please.
Motion.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, resolution 2019-04-01 would be the first step in applying for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, 2019 FAST grant, FAST grant, which is fire ambulance and service trucks. We talked about this, that there would be a grant coming available to try to get a new fire truck, so this would be the one to try to do that. It requires that the city agree to a matching, a cash match of five thousand dollars, which is something we could easily do for a five hundred thousand dollar fire truck. So, I recommend you approve this, so we'll just have to keep looking forward with this.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution 2019-04-01 to approve the allocating matching funds for the TXC, VD, G Fire ambulance and service truck.
Second, all in favor? Motion carries in, as soon as possible. All righty, moving on to J, discussion of possible action regarding naming a city of Pierceall Convention and Civic Centering, City of Pierceall Convention and Civic Center. This is an action item, maintain the motion to discuss, please. Motion to discuss. May I have a second? All in favor? Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council, this is something the mayor and I started working on a long time ago, trying to get an agreement to potentially do this, and we have the agreement, so I will just tell you what the recommendation is. The recommendation is to rename our civic and convention center after John Byron Street. Father of country singer George Strait, who passed away in 2013 at the age of ninety-one, is in the US Army and served in World War II, he taught math at Pierceall Junior High for over thirty years, and was active in the Baptist church here in Gideon's International. Almost everybody know here in town, for those, and everybody, everybody here in town knows him. Part of the reason that we held, that this was held up was because I was trying to get in contact with the Strait family to make sure that they were going to be in agreement with this, and have a letter from George Strait saying that he would humbly accept the honor of having his dad's name on that photo.
And maybe he comes and?
Probably, that's probably a pretty good chance that's going to happen when we do it, if he does. So, I recommend that you rename the civic center after John Byron Street.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, the motion?
I think the motion that we name the City of Pierceall Convention and Civic Center to John Byron?
John Byron Street Convention and Civic Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion carries in, as soon as possible.
So many easy buddy.
Yeah, we'll put it on there. We'll get a, like the plaque we did with the names, we did the dedication, the one that's inside the building, on the other side of the door, one with this picture, there'll be a picture, but it'll be like, it'll be in the bronze with his head, it will have probably that stuff under it, and we'll ask the Strait family what they would like to have written, what they would like to have written on it.
I'd like to say that, you know, he, he would come to the schools quite a bit after he was coming, and helped the kids a lot with reading and stuff, so, he's well-deserved.
Well, we're going to need a bronze statue of that to keep up with the tool. I'm serious.
That was their second, right?
But it's a tiny one.
Oh, is it? Isn't it tiny?
It's not a tall one?
It's small.
Oh.
I thought it was big.
Because they have, they have a bronze statue of Mr. Bisco, and now that's.
Not as big as my father's.
Well, he only taught there one year, it couldn't be.
Awesome, thank you, guys. All righty, item K, discussion of possible action regarding establishing a budget for 2019 City of Pierceall Downtown Texas Event. This is an action item, maintain the motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss?
Second, all in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, as you know, the Downtown Texas, the Downtown Texas Christmas Event, we always do the budget before budget season establishes, because if we wait until the first of October, then we're, we're way behind on getting everything done with that. So, we know, we historically have done this right after the event, and this year I just forgot to put it back on there and get it done, it brought to my attention that we needed to, to get it set up. So, would ask that you guys establish an amount of sixty thousand dollars, which is the same as what we did for the event last year, to be the budget for that event, so they can start planning.
Why? Question?
I have a question. If we have already, if you have already bought all the flattable things, why so much money still?
So, we can continue to build more. The whole concept of that thing was when we got it done, we would have large-scale attraction things to go all the way around that whole square. San Marcos would have them, it would come all the way down Kamal Street, and then when at some point when we had enough, we would also block off that, block off Main Street, and it would be a square all the way around where you go all the way around. So, we buy one or two big things every year, because we couldn't afford to buy everything at once, we just add some every year, one or two big things every year.
What is the hot tax fund, don't you?
Three hundred.
Three hundred thousand?
Yeah, it's three hundred and some thousand on the last, on the last, and I think we'll probably see that as we'll start to pick up with the two, with all the people we see in the roads.
And this is, I didn't hear, is it, this is a hot?
It is a hot.
Any questions?
I have a question about it too. It's regarding the hot funds.
Yeah, it doesn't happen with that one, I would agree with it.
Okay, so the sixty thousand, we already know what we're going to buy?
No, no, we start, we don't start planning what's going to be purchased until after. We know some of the parts that we'll do, we know what some of the stuff costs, you know, the same stuff that we do every year, I mean, we know what the costs are on that, but we don't, we haven't started looking, nobody's started looking at the large items for this next year to expand our, our big attractions.
Can we get like an estimate of what the cost of stuff that y'all are planning on getting, and then we can approve?
Could, I mean, it's, it's.
It's allocate and they?
That's the way we historically do it, that way we know what we can go look at for March, for the large items.
So, we allocate the sixty thousand, I mean, do you guys spend the sixty thousand?
We spent the whole sixty last year, I think it ended up at fifty, we're just, like, clearly it was fifty-two, fifty-three.
Star? You weren't in charge of the budget?
It was fifty-three somewhere in there.
No, I didn't get all the totals.
Okay. I wasn't in charge of the budget either.
So, it was fifty-two, fifty-three, or something like that. No, we don't try to spend every video.
So, how mu, how much revenue does, does come in fiscally into the hot tax fund, more or less?
Per year, somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand is what comes in. And we, and so like, in last year's, last year's budget, where we budgeted the hotel tourism, department, the community promotions, all the things that we do out of that, we established that budget to be very similar, to be right at what we bring in each year, so we weren't taking from the balance. So, so the year before, we brought in about two hundred and fifty, two thousand, I think, in revenue, and so the budget was, the whole budget that came out of it, we tried to keep it under two fifty-two, so we knew that we weren't continually eating away at that fund. So, and then, so if we have extra people standing out, the fund should be built up because we didn't budget that for this year.
And that, that money covers, I mean, like, more or less, I mean?
The vans, the loads?
Yeah, well, we do, single mile, pace for vans, I mean, pace for everything at the defensive, I mean, pace for everything. If we have staff, we'll have a defensive cover, that it covers everything.
The operations of the buildings, the maintenance of?
Yeah, we cover a lot, we cover a lot of what comes in every year.
And it's generated off of, if, if hotels are getting busier?
Busy hotels, that's the more money we get.
But we don't make any money off of that?
Off of.
Off of doing any of these, it's like?
We make, we make a little bit, you know, the whole purpose is to try to get people in town, stay in the motel, eat in the restaurants, spend money at the businesses, I mean, that's the purpose of it.
But the city doesn't like go out to try and make any money off of that, right?
The only one of these events that we do anything related to trying to make money out of single mile, that's the gate to go to the renovation fund for Main Street, that's the only time we've ever charged any, I can remember, that was paid for our office.
We shouldn't charge. Yeah. I mean, I'm just wondering if, if, if we do, because I don't remember us doing anything that would make us earn any money, I mean, I don't know if it was anything like that. Yeah.
I'd like to bring Leah in on this, because Main Street, and one of the recommendations, that we turn Pierceall into the designated South Texas Christmas place to experience Christmas in the south part of Texas. And they had some nice information to share on that when they provided us a report. So, as we're building tourism, as we're trying to bring people from Additown, and the reason every year we want to keep it at the same amount to add and to add, you know, to make it that real Christmas, if you've been to other places in Bernie or in Fredericksburg, and you go see their beautiful decorations and all the activities, so it just, we want to make it bigger and better and start building that reputation, oh, we got to go to Pierceall for their Christmas. And that was in Leah's report.
You know, and that's what happened in Bernie, I mean, every year they add to it, they just buy more, and that's, that was, that was the whole concept, we started, this is the first year we bought the, the, the first year we bought the snow globe, that was the big attraction, first year, then we added in the giant slide, then this year we added in the reindeer, the extra, extra bounce houses for the little kids, and every year just adding it, something that doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, it's not going to always be an inflatable or something like that, it's going to be something different, it's something to bring people down here. And then also, we paid for the advertising, we had, we had TV spots in the Rainbow in San Antonio to bring people, and that's the way you get them to start coming, is that repetition, and I gave them a quality, a quality event to, to come to.
So, who owns this?
No, Zilla.
Zilla's.
Oh, it is, really?
Zilla owns it.
That'd be funny if I must put it up. No way.
Yes, we pray for good weather.
I think, I think moving forward, it's, it's great to try to continue this and so forth, but we really need to do, place some emphasis on getting people down here, because for some of the times, yeah, it would look like it was kind of packed, but for a lot of the time, it looked like we were needing people. So, yeah, the, the advertising, maybe the sixty, okay, let's, let's, some of us I know are thinking, because we've discussed this in the council, that the hot fund is doing way down, right? So, by one dollar to sixty, I, I would just make the recommendation that we lay emphasis on, on really promoting the event to try to get people out.
Well, you know, two years ago, it was miserable cold, you know, the first night you couldn't move in downtown, and then the second day it was raining, and it was, it was ugly. This year we had the high winds, and the snowslide flipped upside down, and we had, we had a couple, you know, weather hasn't been very cooperative the last couple of years, so third time's the charm, I think this year you guys are going to have great weather, and I think that'll help. We have people here from, you know, we have people coming from Oklahoma, we, we talk to people out there, the year before the rain, there was people walking around out there in the rain, I was talking to them, there were people from Oklahoma, Arizona, I mean, they came in because they heard about it from somebody else, and I know the same thing this year, a lot of people in San Antonio, they were planning on coming in, it was, it was, we didn't get the rains here, we got the wind, but remember San Antonio over there, they got ferocious storm up there that day, they had flooding in a bunch of those creeks and so, we have, we've had a little bit of issues with, with, with weather, but I think the advertising, definitely, yeah, we're going to keep, keep pushing that, you know, we have the TV spots, people are starting to recognize it now, and if they start to recognize it, that's when they'll, they'll take off.
The only suggestion that I have is, is to keep an accountability of what's being spent. As, as it's, it was shown right now, nobody knew how much was actually really spent, so I would like an accountability of everything that's being spent, you know, I mean, which, I mean, any bit of this and that, we wouldn't want exactly where everything's going. And as being stewards for the City of Pierceall, we need to be vigilant on staying on budget and knowing exactly where everything's going.
And we keep a running budget during the event, for the time, for the time council approves it, we have a sheet, we keep it all running. Of course, it's all audit, I mean, it's all, you know, it's all covered, we keep that running to make sure that we don't go over, and you know, it's just, it's been, it's been five months, a lot of numbers come and go, last five months, so that's why everybody can't remember the exact number.
Well, and I think, I mean, I don't know if I can ask? Well, and I think, I mean, I don't know if I can ask, but I mean, it, what would be nice is if after, if we could have like maybe a printout of, of a breakdown of where everything was spent, I mean, it would, I would like to know, I mean, because now...
We did that, did we? I think the year before we did that, when I came back in January and got the budget for last year, I think we did, we brought it in, and so this year, there was just so much fun, I just didn't even, didn't think we would put it all in January agenda, and it just got forgotten until she reminded me, you better get this done, or I'm gonna have time to hear her plan.
Alrighty, may I maintain a motion to address item K, please?
I make a motion that we establish a budget for the 2019 City of Pierceall Downtown Texas Christmas. For the amount of...
60.
Can I say no more than 60?
Sure.
No more than 60,000.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries announcements. Alright.
Madam Mayor, before you start, you guys, in your packet, you have the, the resolution that goes with the next one. You don't even want to execute session if you don't want to, we just put it on there in case you wanted to go in to talk about it, but if that's up to you guys. So if you guys wanna go in, you can, if not, the resolutions are funded, it's the same resolution you guys have all done, but it just needs to be done.
If we do it in session, or is everybody? It's amazing how we leave, because we don't have, everybody has to leave. Do I have time? Also, we want to execute session, time is 9:34. Second, all in favor? Second. All in favor? Time is 9:31. And two seconds. Alrighty, open session, discussion possible action to approve resolution number 2019-04-02 establishing a stipend for the interim city manager. This is an action item, maintain a motion to discuss or to address the resolution number 2019.
Motion to discuss, second.
All in favor? Alrighty.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number 2019-04-02.
There is a motion on the table, on the center.
Second.
All in favor, crush your hands. There is one, two, three, all opposed. That's one, two, three, four.
What's all I gonna do, start calling? What's all I gonna do, start calling?
So you have no insurance in the way?
You have one that you're not gonna pay to do the job, I'll go do it too. Do you have, do you have any business left to do with attorney consulting I left on the agenda?
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.